that you know I'm supportive of the keeping the clinic and keeping the clinic in Lorraine. Now, I was made aware that there were some rumors that the commissioners weren't supporting this and I'm always amazed by this because, you know, when I was the TV news director, my staff members of my staff would say, well, somebody said. And I used to remind them that when I process payroll every week that somebody is not on my payroll. So I know they don't work there. And I would just encourage you and that if you or others hear any rumors, you know, about where the commissioners are on this or on that, please pick up the phone, call me, call any of us, and you can call me on a Saturday.
...
That, you know, I'm supportive of the keeping the clinic and keeping the clinic in Lorraine. Now, I was made aware that there were some rumors that the commissioners weren't supporting this. And I'm always amazed by this because, you know, when I was the TV news director, my staff's, members of my staff would say, "Well, somebody said."
Yeah.
And I used to remind them that when I process payroll every week, that somebody is not on my payroll. So, I know they don't work there.
Mm-hmm.
And I would just encourage you and that if you or others hear any rumors, you know, about where the commissioners are on this or on that.
Right.
Please pick up the phone, call me, call any of us. And you can call me on a Saturday night at midnight, two in the morning, I don't care. If it's something that's bothering you, something you need to get an answer to, give us a call. Much rather have you make sure you know clearly, you know, where we stand on everything. And then that way it'll be cleared up and you also get a better night's sleep.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think any of us are very shy with sharing our opinion on an issue.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
It's G Family Day.
Yeah, it is. Rosa G. 272 Gale Drive Sheffield Lake. I'm here representing as a veteran's wife. My husband uses that clinic on a continuous basis along with a lot of other veterans. One of the other locations that has been chosen and has been talked about is an area located in the vicinity of 254 and 301. Any of us that have lived around that area or drove through that area, it's not a traffic-friendly area for seniors. A lot of the veterans that use the clinic at its current location ride bicycles, a lot of them walk. To use the area over by Hoag Drive in Sheffield Village, the traffic's too congested. I've drove seniors over there to doctor's appointments that drove, but they were too afraid to drive in that congested traffic. We need to consider and put our veterans first on this. Not that, oh, this is a better building or, oh, this is a closer location to Route Two. The veterans that use our clinic don't use Route Two, very few do. And the ones that are capable of using it already attend the clinic in Lorraine City. We all need to urge everyone to please consider the veterans that have the least forms of transportation and also the ones that have a lot of stress in their life. And there are plenty of counseling classes at the current location for the Lorraine VA Clinic. A lot of these veterans that attend these classes do not feel comfortable moving to a new location. If they don't feel comfortable and don't go, the veterans clinic's defeating its own purpose. We need to have it a veteran-friendly location. And that consists of a lot more things than just a building. Thank you. You have a great day.
Ms. G, I have a question for you, Joe. Wanted for a moment. The, I know I've heard the Sheffield rumors with the old Kmart. Actually, I've heard them off and on for like six years.
Kmart's full now.
Yeah, I know that they had some...
It's now a medical building is what they're saying.
Is that what?
Yeah.
Oh, the med-- is that the one across from that plaza?
Yes.
I think it was, you know, we looked at that building, the old hospital. We looked at that building ourselves. The, did anybody talk to the VA themselves or is it just we're getting stuff from?
Sam will be able to answer those for you.
Sam, have you talked to the VA? Okay, great.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is Sam Newfelton Jr. How's everyone doing this morning?
Good.
I serve in a capacity as President of Lorraine Vets Council, Vice President of Lorraine County Council for Veterans, Commander of DAV-20, Chairman of the Valor Home, and President of our NABVETS. And I have to emphasize just a little bit further what Joe and Rosa are saying, that it is vital that we keep the clinic in Lorraine because Lorraine basically is a financially-depressed area, sad enough to say, but it's true. And there is a lot of veterans there that simply can't afford to go to different locations. Some of them can't afford to make it to the appointments in Wade Park. So, basically, I would like to see it become an all-around facility, a one-stop shopping. Basically, because as you know, we've all been involved in Valor Home for now 51 months and we have 25 veterans there that are being served. So, you know, I thank you for your support for that project. It was a hard project to get going, but once we did, everyone got behind it and it came to success. So, you know, please just consider supporting this and thinking about that. You know, Lorraine truly is the best place for our veterans. Thank you. Served those who served our country.
Did you want to answer? Do you have the answer for Mr. Cortez? He asked if anybody has actually talked directly to the VA about changing locations.
Sam, are they talking to you at all? I know that they're really a hard organization that can...
Yeah, Secretary McDonald and I have, I had a list of people that we have talked to about this, you know, and I think we're gonna have to take a contingent to go into Cincinnati to see the second-in-command for the state of Ohio and then possibly get an audience with Secretary McDonald. Because the members of the IAV, they actually went to Washington and he met with them about this.
The, the local VA director doesn't have any input into this from here?
No, not really, no.
Okay.
No.
So, so it needs to step up?
Yes.
Further. Well, I think with discussions I've had with Mayor Rittenhour, he's been with Secretary McDonald more than a few times in discussions on how this is going, but there's no formal, I don't know, the GSA awards the buildings.
Yes.
The VA doesn't do that, so I don't know if there's a process there.
Yeah, but GSA is the, is the arm of the VA.
Right.
I mean, the VA makes a decision.
They're the arm of everybody.
Yeah, the GSA goes out, negotiates the ridiculous contracts they make you have to even get them in there.
Right.
Have you ever seen a GSA contract?
Yes, I have.
They're, they're...
It's a hundred-page document that they gave to, what is the city engineer, Doug Rangel, a hundred-page document. And they have to actually hire an architect and another attorney to figure out how to decipher this document before they resubmit it to the VA, which is utterly ridiculous.
I, I was the Chair of South Shore when we did the original VA document. I'd never seen more bureaucratic mumbo jumbo in my whole life.
Right.
It was just, it was just terrible, the things that you have to agree to and go through. It's just amazing. And it's a contract of adhesion, they don't change it. It's given to you and that's the way it is.
Right.
There's no back and forth discussion on how it's gonna be. It's very challenging to work with GSA. You know, but I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we were talking to somebody higher up and it sounds like you have already, so...
Yes. So, thank you and have a good morning.
And thank you for all you do out there at Valor Home.
Thank you.
Great place.
There's a reason why we were excited that Valor Home found the, the location that it did because it was right across the street from the VA clinic. So, we need to have that campus-like atmosphere for those guys and others that are using that facility.
And there's a synergy there.
Yeah.
And if it can be expanded, it would be even, you know, more important to the area.
Did Ted use the word synergy?
Yes, I did.
He did.
You like that? You know, all that Nowaka stuff is where you rub it off.
No, I don't use that in Nowaka. That's the only way down Nowaka goes.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? See, and I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Cowsky?
Aye.
Ms. Rondy?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.